It's Juvenes! We are saying thank you Jesus, thank you my lord. We are saying thank you Jesus.
Thank you my lord.
Oh, we are saying thank you, thank you Jesus.
Thank you my lord.
We reference you for a day like this, we give you honour, take glory in the mighty name of Jesus. Father, we are here gathered in your presence, we commit all that we are going to discuss here today with your heaven hands, in the mighty name of Jesus. We take charge by the Holy Spirit of God that every vivora that is going around in this meeting, mother, you should arrest, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. That all our desolation here today will give us a fruitful results, in the mighty name of Jesus. We pray for our principal, over the Almighty God, Father God, you continue to endure him with your grace, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. We pray for all the artisans here, present, Father God, we pray. Give them the spirit to work for the victory of the party, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. We call on all our salary with the blood of Jesus. Thank you Father, even as we end, you will hand with us. For a Jesus precious name, we are praying. Praise the Lord. Okay, his name is Comrade Gumeti standing before me, that is going to do the artisanship man, that will do the introduction right here. Up Nata.
Progress!
Progress!
Up Nata!
Yes, today is the day here, we have come, we greet our D S P here, our honourable incoming governor. We welcome you to this occasion. As you can see, we are members of Nigerian Automobile Technical Association, at the same time, GATA, all our under artisans, the informal sector. We are struggling, we are working hard to see how we can make a change, change that will affect our life. We welcome you, our D S P and all honourable member here, all our enviables, honourables, commissioners, and to build an House of Red to be, all your perspective, you have prayers of, to be in your mind, God will do it for you all. Yes, this is the business of the day, we want to introduce all the groups here, we have, as I can see, I don't want to go far, all about is just artisans. We have our representatives in different groups, like the artisan, and from the informal sector, like GATA and NATA, that's all we have here today. Though this arrangement comes very short to our own notice, in who we are here, will have been here, not only this body that is sitting down here, but anyway, we are going to take the message home, tell all the rest, from other three groups, that this is what we come for, and this is what we are going to be. Up Nata!
Progress!
Progress!
Up Nata!
The State Organising Secretary here, that will be Sunday, is one of our executives from the States, in Nigerian Automobile Technical Association, I want you to stand up and say something.
Up Nata! Progress! No Nata! No Gumets! Up Nata! Progress!
Every one of you cannot be introduced at this moment, because the State's coordinator, the State Organising Secretary that is presenting the State Chairman here, had just done a little brief introduction. So at this moment, we want to say, let's acknowledge all the group present here, the States, and the Algeria, can you stand up for recognition please? The mechanics are present here, right?
Yes!
Raise your hand if you are mechanic present here. If you are electrician present here, raise your hand. Oh, you are all welcome, you are all welcome. It is all about our D S P, our incoming governor, meeting with you, it is an interactive section. To brief you is aim and objective, and also, like I told you before, you guys, that you should know the reasons why you are here. Is that understood?
Yeah!
So you are welcome. So for that brief introduction, we're going to introduce the team and members, the members of the team, executive members, that is with the entourage of our principal here.
This afternoon, we are here to meet with a critical segment of our state. These people gathered here, if they decide to down to for one day, vehicles will not move, I mean that be so? So, I'd like to quickly recognize that there are two major groups here, two major group, NATA and... Okay, thank you. So, all of them are artisans, I promise you, okay, thank you. So please, today we are privileged to have in our midst, the incoming governor of Delta State, a man that you know very, very well. By the grace of God, he has served this state in several capacities, is very, very, very knowledgeable and experienced in the area of governance, having served first as executive assistant to the governor, and then eventually, he was made commissioner for special duties, and then before he became the secretary of the state government, and then he was elected senator twice to represent the good people of Delta Central in the senate. And today, for the grace of God, is our current deputy president of the senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you the incoming governor of Delta State, his assistant secretary here, and again, the vice president of the governor. The former special advisor to the governor of this state, former minister for special duties, former minister of Nigerian data affairs, today is the director general of the Delta IPC Campaign Council, our leader, Edagoste Urubebi. We also have here, the deputy director general of the Delta IPC Campaign Council, the former country director of Asian Aid International, former secretary of the African Centre for Leadership Strategy and Development, and currently, the chief of staff to the deputy president of the senate, Dr. Tiven Buzo. We also have here, with us, our leader, the secretary of the Delta IPC Campaign Council, a professor of law, Dr. Uchetra Okolochan. We also have here, the premier secretary of the Superdeck. When he was leading the Superdeck, the Superdeck lived up to its billing as an international agency, tapped the responsibility of developing the oil-producing areas. Today, you can no longer see the Superdeck projects anywhere in Delta State. I have, I am yet to see, in the last couple of years, any of the Superdeck projects started and completed anywhere across Delta State. But when Chief AK Osamota was there, so we know the truth. So, it has yet to be recorded, Chief AK Osamota. We also have here, a former member of the Delta Science Society, representing the good people of Uweli, North constituency too, my leader, former chief press secretary to the governor James Ibori, honourable Epe Oshibiri, the welcome sir. Referee of the Delta IPC Campaign Council, and senior legislative aide, deputy president of the senate, Barista Massa Abajon. We also have there, a former commissioner for transport in this state, and the deputy director, medical services, a former special advisor on health matters in the governor of Delta State, and a member of the medical directorate of the P C C, fan of Ethiopia's local government council, Olorugu Faith Majemete. We have, I also have my big brother here, engineer, Neta Ishakam, Emmanuel Ishakam, you are welcome. We also have, Olorugu Young Akude, you are welcome sir. We have here, a former commissioner in this state, former member of the Delta Science Society, representing the good people of Patani, constituency, Dr. Timi Tony, you are welcome. We have here, a woman leader, Paracere, a great sister from Uweli North, Olorugu Flores Akboibo, you are welcome. We would like to now invite the State Organizing Secretary of this group, to please give us the welcome, opening the mic. Olorugu Toby Sunday, please, thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, all the protocol duly observed. I am here this afternoon to represent our state officer, though they are unavoidably absent due to some other thing that take them away. So we are sorry for that. Alright, having said that, I want to welcome all my comrades that are here, and even the entourage of our leader here, D S P, and my incoming governor of Delta State. We are here this morning to share from your view, to transform Delta State. And having heard that you are coming to discuss with us, we are very much happy to hear from you, because even with two, there are some challenges that are facing us. So we'll be happy this morning, but this afternoon rather, to hear from you. Having heard from you, then we can now bring up every one or two, three things that we would like to, to get from you. So I welcome each and every one of you, you are welcome, thank you very much. The incoming governor of Delta State, his assistant secretary, Yorba Gueye, to address us on this special occasion. Thank you.
Up Nata!
Progress!
Up Nata!
Progress!
No Nata!
No Gumets!
Up Nata!
No Gumets!
No Gata!
No Gumets!
Thank you very much. Please, sit down here, you may sit. Next time, our leaders, on this side of the table, not behind table, on this side of the table. I welcome my colleague yours sir. I also welcome our leaders here. Our leaders will put this arrangement together. I thank all of them. But more importantly, our brothers and our sisters, where you work for this artisan industry. I work for all of them, for this gathering. This gathering today, as I say, don't say when we start this campaign. Campaign won't take liberty Delta State. All of us went to the state, nobody there happy. If you go Urubaland, we would have the vex. You go in Shakri land, they have vex. You go in Jola, they have vex. You go Undokwa, Okwale nation, they have vex. Even Ani Ojocha Shimili, they have vex. Even the place where governor come from, sir, they are part of us, they cast out, they have vex too. I go, I don't know, I don't know the vex. Why they call the vex? They have vex because what they see for the state, so nobody like them. And they know see, Delta would be rich state. Would not be poor state at all. Everybody know how Delta be. Say for the whole of Delta, now we will reach past, now we reach past. We reach past all the river state, reach past Akwaibo. But if you look today, if you go those places, we will reach past there. Developments, they there well, well. You go rivers, you know see, we can't put flyover everywhere. In fact, the last time, I followed themself, you know commissioner about fourteen, fourteen flyovers. I know they will death for anyone. As I once start, you go set aside the money, you go give them, how much I want, Julius better. Only if you're better than they use, oh, you know they use any, all this guy. Before you start, you go ask them, how much? How much you go cost, they do this one, they will tell us, you go look for the money, you go sit at my side, sit at the money business, you finish up in nine months, and your money business, you carry go. You know who, they are more cover. Akwaibo too, not the same thing. But here, when we reach past there, the money we they gave from Fiducia Government every month, our own big pass their own, we will get more from VAT. We will receive more than the two for derivation, because we the produce oil and gas, not be so? And we also, our internal, internal generate revenue, all those people they collect, yeah, but then you add all together, even the one we they receive self, he pass their own. If you see case of two self, where, they see the two road, when the Fiducia Government road, I put the Fiducia Government, Fiducia Government pay back. But then you add all of them, all together, now total four point two trillion naira, and we don't get for this state. But if you look around everywhere, you don't go see anything, okay? See our road, it bad way way. Our hospitals, it bad way way. Our schools, it bad way way. Even on our family people, when this civil service, when they walk, they don't walk, they don't repair, to pay their pension self, they don't give pay them. On our brothers, on our children, they go school, you know, when they go Delta State University for the technique, not for the education. And so, when we don't have the governor, their school fees are about twenty-five thousand naira. Today, now it don't go three hundred thousand naira. I know see someone, someone they come from, on our family, not be so? And when they take a person, I go get money, they pay. When I want get the money, but they pay. So everything just bad for the state, everything just bad. People go go school, on our children go go school. The school are supposed to be four years, so we spend about six, seven, eight years for them. After one bad reach, I even when they graduate finish, to give them work, work not there. They are taking, they go they write. They don't turn the place to headquarters of care. For those of them, when they stay here, when they will not worry me before, remember how worried me before? The call of course will go on for this time, when I worried me before. The place now, it be like, you know, total state of decay, state of rot, everything does can't happen, not be so? And I make nobody happy. So, because of that, I was okay, time don't come again, for election. Okoa no say, he does it for church, not be so? In they go, in they fear, in they fear, say they go push one. You go from there, I say okay, maybe they don't push one now, I won't go carry the ass boy. Maybe they can't take over, maybe they protect him back, you know? Our hand cap is there, as he go bring here, he has, but he not, not better, when he go school self, or he goes more. It's it, it's it. I spend money way way, I know now, all the money, they fight for everything, they do work. And I face my children goes to, not be so? But the goal I don't know, I face what they say, school now, education now scam. Say they don't need to go school. Wait, because all the money, we spend, they should send our children go school, all our waste, now they go play, come. And wait, after say our waste school, they go, say our ladies. But also, my man, they go our ladies. Even if father say, not the principal. You know see, principal be king, whether he be boy or girl, they don't put you for class like that. Maybe they follow their study, whether in high school or in middle school, it don't matter. Then I eat the paper, not the principal, they will not see paper, not the principal, not be so? Two things when they vex us for this sheriff move. Our speaker, I have been number three person for this state, for state government, now even government, on the top, not no, parliament bill. My decision is for send, they hold the whole attitude for us. You know, for house assembly here, Vasa Ba, now the whole the government, now they control. But in present Koku, they establish three university, one day, three, one day. He put one for Walero, he put one for Akbo, he put one for Ahsaba. He come convert one for Ozoro to university. Sheriff, carry government, you are proven. Sheriff, sheriff, they will ask her, not tell governor, say governor, ah, ah, me I come from Urubebi. I mean also be, I come from Oshube. Look up, look up, we don't get school for there. We don't get the sheriff's to your purpose. Governors, you bring this in for three schools, but before, you don't give us one. After fear, sheriff, I ask Okoa. On the body that one, eh, bad. You see that road when the years, from P T R, through Urubebi, Abraka to Akbo. The road be, to complete that road, you don't need more than twelve billion naira. But the Okoa don't borrow eight hundred billion. Eight hundred billion naira. To complete that road, we need only that twelve billion naira. Sheriff, when the Okoa carry application come, see one loan, eight hundred billion, you go bring them, today could be one hundred billion, then they could want another one hundred twenty billion, and then they give, want another two hundred billion, if you total all, not eight hundred billion. Sheriff are from Ube, Luca, governor. That road, we talk so, it pass through Urubebi, not be so? You know they tell Okoa, say, hey governor, all this money loan, where they take so, you know, if you are get small, maybe they complete our road, fear, not like sheriff, ask them. And the kind man, when one make governor, he that, you walk? You see the same thing for the Uweli, to Wissoko, Undokwa, to Asaba. The same thing, to finish that road, you don't need more than ten billion naira. Sheriff too, the whole government, fear, not be tell us, say, out of the eight hundred billion, what governor don't borrow, maybe you are bring small, maybe they complete them, final letter, ask them. And they mustn't want become a governor. And now, if you see the sheriff agenda, he says say more. See the more agenda, which means, if sheriff become governor, it will be more suffer. It will be more low. So everything really bad to this road, it will be more and more and more of that, everyone.
Low!
Everyone.
Low!
Anyway, today, today, most of our children, when they leave school, like I talk, they don't get work, they sit down for house. Worry here, not as it be before. All the companies where they work for here, all don't run for month. If you ask them, why they run for month, they'll give you two reasons. Reason number one, they say they have vex too much. Any company want do anything for a year, before you start, they will speak, give money for the vex. And who be the leader of the vex? Ah, sheriff. Because of sheriff, all the companies, they run for month. In fact, not too long ago, Delta State government, under Odua, say they won't bring Julius better, come work when they expand that airport, to make an international airport. Julius better say, for as long as sheriff, the government, they don't they come. Because they know see, because of the vex, the grit for the vex, they don't go feel work for here. Then a one reason, all the company, they run for month. Another reason, if you say, is because of insecurity. I agree, things don't go bad way way, things don't go bad. You know, people don't know, they sleep all night, maybe they fear. The world eye close, you know, because of security challenges. So we identify the problem, but me, I get solution to all this problem. That's my why, I be run for governor. Me, I decide say, we don't go feel continue like this, to allow our children, when they are doing, put their safe for house. We must put them back to work. Therefore, all those companies, when they run for month, so, we get to bring their comeback. We bring their comeback, we bring their comeback, my government will abolish the vex. You know see, after that day, today now, eh? On a free design, that's it, on a long set up, a mechanic workshop, for who here? They will tell you say, before you be who set up there, they come be the vex. We feel very very free, to set up your business, and expand your business, without anybody threatening you with the vex, or anything like that. For that too, we also decide say, we will come on board as governor, to address the security challenge. We will invest our money into the security architecture. We improve our way way, we will buy all those devices. So can we say, if you do office as governor, with my security advisor, we will they look screen, like television screen like this. It, I want know which they go on for who here, they will show me, they will simply they go check the map for me, you understand? So that way, you go know all the bad parties where they go on, they will do to invest that security architecture. Not maybe it could be the first, for other, some other states don't run, and you put your state now, security, the crime don't, don't go down, way way. And then two, as part of to create jobs for our children, to one measure, say, these two roads, when we talk about justice, and so, we won't bring Julius better, Julius better come, he will go through them. And then, and then, we also insist, say us, they do the job so, and they do the job so, they go hire artisans, they do the job. And we make us say, we make us say, that only the artisans where come from Delta State, and they go hire. Now only, when they tell us say, they talk to owner, and we are not get any qualified person go do the job, it is only then and then, we will, okay, if you go outside, for me, I know say, you don't get any kind job. So that way, you know, we are creating jobs for all of you, our children, our brothers, not good like that. And then, Wory, we clean Wory up. The Wory they see now, we don't like them at all. We are going to clean up this place, we go, we go modernize this city. If the way it be before, we are going back, if we make it even better. Then more importantly, to also create jobs for now, we reopen the Wory port here. And you say, I also think we will reopen now, plenty business for competition, not be so? The economy could give the bubble again, so now we have plenty work to do. But you see, only me love to do the job. Thank you, only me love to do one. I need help, I need help. We get five elections, when they come soon, we get election for president, we get election of senator, we get election for House of Red, therefore, governor and House of Assembly. Only me will do this work. All this is when I talk soon, I need a president, when they follow me work. You know see, anytime you get president and governor, when a governor is in party, then they work together. As I did here now, I be deputy president of the senate. I don't be senate owner at two times. But as I did here soon, Okoa never invite me one day to enter governor's house. I be over five citizen for the world of Nigeria. But I come from Delta State. But Okoa never one day invite me to enter governor's house, Asaba. And even no have governor's house, even look inside. But you know why? Uh, because we meet our, we don't do the same party. So you see, if you have look around everywhere now, when I go see everything, I don't. If you have go around all the villages, you have go see street lights. Now you see them, Ali? Very good, very good. Thank you very much, thank you, thank you. So all those transformers, all those street lights, all those push when I build. All those places when I renovate soon. All those roads when I do just can there, I do them with my power of federal government. If me and the governor, they together, as I the fight come from Abuja, after they carry a follow body. Go tell Mr. President, "Mr. President, help him." "Mr. President, help him." Not be so. Yesterday, I go away. Go join my friend, the governor of Imo State. They welcome the president Boari to his state. And also present our presidential candidate, Jagabah. You see, yeah, when, when, when the governor, they talk yesterday, body called they do me one kind. Body they sweet me by the vex. It is sweet me, the kind things, when they don't bring come Imo State. Because here and Boari are the same party. He talk for this, say, "Mr. President, I come beg you. Convert Avadi, go calling for education to university." "Mr. President, you approve for me." "Mr. President, you get this road, when I want do, now federal road, I come beg you, beg you do it for me, you approve of." He mention five roads. He mention that one, he can even mention, uh, uh, a medical center. So many things where president approve for her, all because of the APC governor. So when you have APC governor and APC president working together, things go very, very good. That's my why, I want they gonna, they gonna help me. They gonna help me, give me my own president. And I win the election, I they come first. The man don't promise me, say, if he become president, he go help me open this worry pot. He say he go help me open the worry pot. He say he go help me open the Kokon Asaple pot. I don't tell me how it is go do one. Now plenty money, now we need to dredge this air staff of that, plenty money, now we need. Plenty money, he go let one for me, because people are the same. Boari don't go do that kind thing for Okoa now, why he go down for Okoa, when he won't gain this side? Nothing. But if, say the governor of Delta today, now APC, he go me Boari, what he go do for her? So, uh, so now also support me for governor soon. I beg owner, they can also support me to make Jagabah president. I want say some people, some people. I know, wait. Make a ban on some, just listen to me. I know say some people, some people get mind to vote Obi. I don't hear that one. But you see, I want make owner know say, two of them, they be governors before. Obi now governor of Anambra before. And a good man, a very good man, I like him, my friend say, a good person. I see Waju Jagabah, now governor too. Before, for Lagos. If you look Lagos and you look, uh, uh, Oka, you can choose one. When they put two things for grand, they choose one. Even the two good, one must better part of that one. You not be saying that one bad, oh. Yes, oh, you not be say it bad. Because this is an election. Now, person who come from southern Nigeria, now we want. Boari now Malaga, Boari is a father to me. Now my friend, now my president, Ben, now not honor. He don't do in eight years finish. As the eight years of finish, so the next president is supposed to come south, not be so. Therefore, Artikou not go from south. Eh? We, we not be slaves. We don't consider here say, after eight years of, uh, enough president. Maybe we see say, I'm not honor again, you know, bro. He go mention we be slave, not be so. Are we slaves?
No!
Even Boari himself. Even Boari himself, say, the next president must go from southern Nigeria. All the governors, when they, uh, uh, not of APC, I think about seventeen or eighteen of them. They don't put their food down, say, the next president must go from southern Nigeria. Even all our governors, where come from southern Nigeria, all of them also agree. Say, the next president must go from southern. The only Okoa, they don't betray us. On another one. He come pass back, he pass back behind, eh? Go say, ah, say no, uh, even though all of us, basically, they come from Nigeria, they will not be, they will take. They will keep after there, they will keep their vice president. Not be, they demand they enjoy to become slave. Are we going to become slave?
No!
So, after we de concern, Okoa and Artikou, they don't even date the race. So now between Obi and Jagabah. Now, we now go ask ourselves this very, very important question. Which kind Nigeria, now we want for ourselves? Which kind Nigeria you want for yourself? Which kind Nigeria you want for your children? Which kind Nigeria now you want for your family? Now Nigeria when it look like Oka, Anambra, I mean that Nigeria will look like Lagos. We now know how Lagos be. We now know how Oka be. Which one we now want? As for me, Obi Yomadige, and my family, and all of us from APC. We say we won't make Nigeria look like Lagos or Oka. Not be so. So, as we will help me vote for her, I thank owner. But moving from there. We also need the senators. When go go National Assembly. Five over five, thank you very much. Five over five, but we need people when go help the president take pass the agenda. We now see the way I support Boari for there. And we now see my reward. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, so, so thank you. So, I want make owner, I want make my help us support all of our candidates, five over.
Five!
Now, when we now go back. The stage of the campaign when we did that, now one person talk to another person. Now we do so. One person talk to another person, door to door. Because your future, they are stick. Your future is a stick. If we not arrest the situation now, we don't feel redeemable again. Exactly, we don't want that one. So we will have a chance now, eh, to remedy everything by retiring Okoa. They will retire, all the people, people when they governor, they will retire there. Who go sat there, eh? So I want to thank you. I want to thank you. Now, my plan be say, when I become governor. Every now, then like every quarter. I want make the whole this time meeting. This time quarterly interaction. I will tell owner, what I want to. And I want hear from owner, what if you on our problem. Because me, I not go know everything by myself. The ones when I know, I would do. The ones when I don't know, I go want make owner tell me, say, this is a problem, when we get. And we will put our hands together, we go look for the way we go take, uh. Solve, uh, uh, the problems. You know go like that?
No!
Because I want make this government be on our government. I want make owner, owner, we will talk say, yes, now we put this government for there. Therefore, now what you want, now the government will do for you. If, after I win, I serve for, I will come talk. And all the promises I make, I not feel keep them, now go remind me. Because I listen for the company game. See, if I don't keep my promise, you know, I not be so. So I will hear from owner. But apart from waiting to hear from you, I want make a own commitment owner. See, this sector, owner, this one, have very important sector. And we need to encourage you. We are going to look like this. Because when it good for owner, it good for government. When it good for the family, it good for government. Everything owner they do, owner, they help to stabilize the economy. But they help us to grow the economy. You are helping us to grow wealth. We just want, want to give owner, want create a neighbor environment owner. They could have business expand. If it means having to sign an M O U with the banks here. May they give owner money. I go report the banks. And I will sit down with owner leadership. But I will give me the list of those, where more expand, yeah, be when they more, not be say that dash. Uh huh, yes, not be dash. Eh? We will make an agreement. Say, may they give owner money, we can expand our business. May they buy equipment. Eh, equipment for our business. When I go pay back instrumentally. But if we now not pay back, government will come pay back. Because government could be a guarantor for the loans, so now, you know go like that. So they cannot be say, the reason owner expand our business, that we not get money. Because the money will not come, they go come through the banks, but now we have the guarantor. You know go like that? So that way of business expand, that they make more money, that they make more money, I will pay some more tax to, I believe so. When I pay, when I come pay some more tax like that, I those more tax, because the money when they come, through that, through that governor. Now we can benefit the schools, through the maintain our road, you know, through the maintain our hospitals, not good like that. Thank you very much, so I will take part of this. I tell you, they are very important, eh? I was supposed to say this at the very beginning. Uh, when I come here, or before I come here, they tell me say, the place never full. Uh, policy. Small, they will get access to cash, the same thing. Make I tell you, it's a very, very big problem. But we need to explain them. You see, this policy. If properly implemented, it was it good before. But they implemented well. And as they implemented so, nobody is happy with it. Then I why, we don't feel just sit down, they watch our family people. They watch our brother, sister. They tear from God. No cash anywhere. Even me, as I stand here soon, I be senator, I be deputy senior president. Even this new money, say, barely ever see ourself. Eh? And you can imagine. Now, yes, oh, even me. Exactly, so, so for me, for me, for me, this policy right now, we are not happy with it at all. Now, as a party, APC. As APC, a political party, we are opposed to this policy. Yes, oh, we believe say, both the old notes and the new notes, may they use it together. You know, and because of that one, we as APC, as a party. When we say the suffering of our people, so we not like them, we don't go court. Now we, now go Supreme Court soon, now APC, now go Supreme Court. We even saw our president say, they hear me so. Because, you say not be every policy can either accept. Because we they represent people, of our people. Uh, if, if policy they, we not favor our people who go oppose them. Not be so. So as we do here right now, we, we are opposed to this policy. And we don't measure say, we join our governors, eh, of APC, oh, we don't go court. Supreme Court also spread now, they will see the here say, the banks, they end of bear. And we are not happy with that. But guess what, now P D P, now they support the policy right now. Are you aware of that? Even Okoa issue a release, if you days ago, in support of this, uh, policy. Because they think say, you go favor them. They think say, when hunger, they beat our people. When our people not see money, they will the vex, they will the burn places, and so on. You go favor them for election, you understand? So Artikou, they in favor of this, uh, policy. At Jagabah, don't they cry for almost, you don't they go three weeks now. Say they must stop the policy, not support them at all, I'm sure you are aware. And Jagabah, I go and read for all our APC governors, people go court. Go get an order, and we get the order from Supreme Court. Only say now, they did give follow. And P D P, they don't be the follower. So I just want say, make owner know about this problem. We do with owner. We are in your support. Anything we could make life easy for owner, we support her. Now, when people they come now, call repair their motor. I don't know whether they can get P U S. I don't know whether they can get, uh, bank account. So I don't say it affect owner now. Now, I want to assure you. I want to assure you. As the deputy presidents, deputy president of the senate. And as the governorship candidate of APC in Delta.
Incoming governor.
And by God bless, the incoming governor. I promise owner. I promise owner, we are going to fight, to make sure say, the old note when they on our hand, they will continue to accept them. And we are also going to fight, to make sure say, the new notes go reach on our hand. But more importantly, I want promise owner one thing. Any old note when they on our hand. Where they taken from around now, they don't take and make on our hand. Once Jagabah become president, he go reverse everything. So that this money, so the old money when they on our hand, we will continue to use them. So no money when they go, go, they on our hand, I go they use less, I hear me so. Those they talk say, as from February ten, the new, the old, no be legal tender again, not be so. May not we your money, may not hold on. Once Jagabah, once Jagabah become president, next Saturday. He go and now say, as they swear I mean, all those old money when I get, eh, it will become legal, eh, tender. You know go like that? Thank you very much. Okay. So please, uh, we are not hear from our incoming governor. And as you talk at this night, interactive session. Because they talk say, every days that they take better, they work hard. Nobody know the one way, better they pay, I believe not be so. And so make everybody sit down. So as it be now, uh, we want take question or comment from owner. Instance, whether the state, the challenge, whether they face, if you know say, again with it. Incoming governor need to know, or need to address, when he become governor, we would like make you talk up. From when they talk, if you also care question, what you want ask. I beg, you go raise your hand, so that we give you microphone. Then you go ask a question. We would like make we reduce on the cost of time. So, we would like to take, at least five people, maybe they ask question. Thank you. APC.
Progress!
APC.
Progress!
We greet our T S B. We, we greet Uba Alisilwa of Roverland, Provechins. Who go robust Provechins now? Who go robust Provechins?
Provechins!
We now put our hope for you. My name la government, lucky go mentee. Over eighty years, now we be pull our artisan, go confront governments for interaction. Twenty fifteen, we there was no time confront our government, what a session, our problem. I go do, and they come. We fat mechanical, so they, chief, they not go, but all the chief, they don't like finish. They don't spend the mechanical, now give big boys on the chat. Even me say, I don't go get forty by seventy size for. They don't spend the mechanicalist, now give big boys on the chat, even me say, I don't go get forty by seventy size for eh, upon all the mediums, what I spend for them. All our people here, promise, 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 with the weight, not the zero, government don't de finish again. Now, they tell us, make we de call, make we de go there, they pay for our hearts here, all our members here, they get P V C. We clock workshop to workshop, unit to unit, we must get P V C, and our power. Now, we get that for here, and we never agree, say we want go to P D P one day, we never agree, say that A P C. But if we come out for here, go go sweat for our set, say that here we be go. And my A P C, I de pick up the best for here, all of us go for A P C, we need change, don't do, I don't do, we need change, now come and don't do. Now, they hear me so, I go on my A P C, we there there. There's not now, small business, we de do, we not the rest. As I there so today now, don't do mechanicalist, I don't run that business, small businesses I go do, for our material, now, I de place, they de do small, small money. Every day, now they go calling, they don't now, I want to run with the place now, because talk too much. What do, we have this logo, for my own place again, I propose one hour to everybody, equal here, I don't suffer, my people don't suffer too much. We don't matter, go go government, so they go get mechanicalist, far present, they carry up, enter court, enter prove that today, we don't get all the work. Worry, no mechanicalist, who here, no mechanicalist. The God says, Sa'ple, oh, during when the boy is gone, after nineteen seventy seven, when he first run the government, give for all the senatoral area, they walk on the cell, and they piss, and they send him in the river, who go find the fat today, let the God leave small for us, that be mechanicalist where they for, Sa'ple. We come go again, we fight for all the old today, they don't sell surrounding, they miss small push, and they give for that, they live for us. We come begin work hard, work hard, see, ah, not ona help our people, all the small, small, and when they say, they don't finish yet, finish you. Some of us are proper mechanicalist, and we don't ever go be workshop, they don't prioritize all our efforts. You go see people, they sweat for all of go, they try to fire, they try to go to, to, wala, you want work, wala, no space, no land. And where person want to work, when they do confidence for the person, in pre love to work, they bring a work, and our own, they not come us outside out. So people not step on, we de touch, we de touch, and say, not invest, they lose, for they pray, lot of annoyance. Which kind of wala be this one? I thank God, thank all of you, in the direction now, I go run the room, you, I don't fire you, can't say no, go post for, I be get the way, I can't just go post for. If I go as Sa'ple, they don't see me chair, I don't see anything before, they don't ask me, who here, Sa'ple, they pass, Sa'ple, here. Make they take their home, you can not fire for their promise, empty promise, we need to change you. But when the change walk like that peace, people look on that side, they change. Now, they told they walk on, they use as a slogan, say change, we go change, go change, but the change not compete. Yes, the change will compete by inventing things, when go bring better life, as Sa'ple talk. If the Z port, they walk for worry, all of us, many of us go, that's the again. I know many people go want for D S C, go jump rock, but when logo at choice, they pass their dad. By the goal, I get our privatization, he come, he say go do, he put the people for that, smaller, legal, legal, fifty thousand, and go to play, da. All of us, they smart today, worry now, don't pass that, everything go to outside that. That be, you go hear us so, we go follow you to the last corner. The other day when I come on the road, I did there for me in a house, we would there, lock that over there, we did that, my children, where we wait. Before you come, I wanted to talk that day, but I was not opportunity to do so, God go help me, God go help me, God go help me. All people say, you not go reach it, you go, before that day, bam, and that go. I say to you, I say to you, money not go sit down our photo, tell me what I want here, like it makes me good for you. Like the world was going to see to our daddy for here, and I also go follow that, in sharp one for this page, to the right page. No matter.
No matter.
Up Gata.
No matter.
Up Gata. Our T S B, you show us eh, my beloved food, with everything we don't experience, oh, I believe like sugar, me, oh, me, oh, me, oh. I pray they go help you. We don't suffer too, but we don't get few things, where you want me to put into consultation for us. Some of those things, you don't use mouth, touch them, but it good, they still come from our mouth, because now when you suffer, you suffer. Sometime they go further governments, they are retraining, they call them the cathrology training, the cathronics. The cathronics, because these days now, you know, all the very good man, and did it ah, and so many of us now, learn work for nineteen thirty. So please, we need to upgrade. So now, that I'm not, I organize that program, so national to go to the council, or the federal. The purpose for that training, and to train the trainers, when they train, they will build center, they be like as, that has stayed now, territory geographical zone, the lot, the central, and this thing. So we, as a technician, if God want you to become, or if God want. So we want something like that, so now go feed the train, our people, so that I not go feed the top same, roadside mechanic, and without mechanic, much not go feed move, that's why we talk say, don't matter, no movement, even without matter, T S B no feed here. Our daddy, eh, that God, God say, no go feed here, everyone of us, without us, are not go feed come. But by the time, we not feed the do work, where, you de go now, God forbid, I prepare, come put that for road, not be problem. So if we get that opportunity, to get those things, for all the training zones, I believe we did better for us, for our incoming boys. Because people like us now, by congress, we don't go to the other side, I don't do this mechanic work for thirty years. So now, I believe say now, the other side I go, but the incoming, upcoming ones, we need them. Then another one, very important, I'm a mechanic village, my comrade don't make measure of them. Most of the time, they go give us, they go search for swan, people's land, who go fill up, suffer with a responsible money. Suffer, fill up, who don't fill up, they go do the fine, they go collect and sell, and drive us, we not get choice, because nobody our property, we will come out. That's government, government, or the governor, may they help us, but don't want to help us. So we beg you, if you go feed do this thing for us, as a coach. Then we go, you see they measure of one, where they touch our heart, they might see talk ah two, grants. When people they hear say, maybe government give them money, they just say not free, not be free, get, when government they involve, will help you, things will be easier for us. So many of us, they struggle, they sweat, they nothing, and you know say, if you not get help back, when you de grant, it will hurt you to take claim. So we want me, government, may be our help, I be not be so? Very many of us, they do one or two business, so with the help of government, I think that will feed help us to claim. So now not take too much time, I believe say one or two persons, he gets one to talk, so they call them, they talk the routine. Up Nata.
Progress.
Up Gata.
Progress.
So I come my brother from the other unit. Up Nata.
Progress.
Up Nata.
Progress.
Up Gata.
To get our understand.
Up Gata.
To get our understand.
My name is Lacy, me go say, my name is Remen Oluo Ohi, and I go. My words go like this, for these ten times things, I don't be suffer, all this mechanic, I feel so much. In all means say, we be mechanic, we not be educated, at least, that's true, still through this mechanic, I got opportunity to become twenty twenty one, council, as your council. So, since when I don't become councilor, when I don't run council race, constantly mechanic side be, I can understand say, many of us, we de educated, this is particular the governments. The way you come as, say, you won't come as soon as governor, now be can be here, one by one. And at least, two parties, we there, like what is this my brother talk say, today, say from today, if who like make you wrong, go say, they say you not come the other side, now the truth, now you talk. Because nobody, P D P, they see say, because, and then they rule, they go they use our hand, even if you want try to go on that place, they go, they figure our rest, you say. They figure, that is why, you know, most of these two parties, the two eh, association, where we they Gata here, there's not many. Why do not, why do we come as, onga, now when you don't come as, you won't contest. Now, I take the boldness, and I'm like, what they tell this, who touch me, you touch onga, now that they get so long. Then they not even believe, I go go brand down my Range Rover, break the main foot, that is a lot, you know, instruct, instruct, say, give me money, when I take Gata. Now, when they see I'm here, they say, that is a Gata, is the daylight. So we twenty my brother talk say, if we go back, maybe we all go foot, five, five, other, we lay down our life for you. No mechanic for this time, as you know, see see their face, those face, but many of their face say, you don't go come. See, he say, maybe you go say eh, people come talk, now tell they say, you go come, and the deal when you go to now, where sweet they pass. You stand up on there, you go come down, they go de imagine, I said, I saw, god, they put any way, they go, he de shake, anybody shake it go. Nobody be bedside for here today, nobody be come on us for here today, he raise everybody to assist eh, he see everybody, he see his eh. So, as we go back, this is what we do to now, this is what I'm Percy to Percy, Percy to Percy, and we mechanic, we put it for one, you de go change oh. But you see the mechanic, he span and loss of workshop, now say go drink and get on water, he there walk, now the get on water, and who go drink ah? Who go pee, not be deep, he don't go come, I say, he go tell you why you go there. So that's five, five, up Gata, up Nata, A P C. Up Nata. Up Nata. Say up Nata.
Progress.
No matter.
No matter.
No matter.
No matter.
I meet everybody in the house, including my dear son. Si meto, by the start, okay, on more again. On Paris one. Uh, sir, when you started, I was waiting to hear what you have to say. That you came with a less complicated approach. A fact, by a better fool. If I bring food right now, I don't go feed your man, that's a fact. You see, not what they say about A P C is what I have heard from you. We don't hear much from people outside about A P C, which has declared our mind, but fear. But what you have to say here, to my hearing, if everybody is like you, sir, the world would have been a better place. I am comrade Dennis Ohuwue from Akan. I happen to be a cousin to his son, his senator, if I you call. Like I'm afraid to say it, because people will ask you question, you be coming abroad, and now you be like eh. We have seen a lot. Long day we had eh, inauguration at eh, Uweh Asutahol. After the inauguration, we went to a hotel, where we went to relax. Eh, Tafinone, Honorable Tafinone. House of Asutahol, you came with his people. When they came, sir, he talked to us the way, even the way you approach us, with a very low voice. When I was asked to pray, I commented him, I said, A P C have a grand style of approaching a political group. Because a lot of political group came there, but we saw arrogance, we saw pride, we saw a fat one like Kabuda. But when he spoke to us, I very did, I was convinced, from his face. Well, I trust up to you, sir, you know, we don't suffer a lot for the past or next, because the issue their own, it feels as a mechanic in this town, person like me now, I understand the work. December here, the workshop, the lab, when I spend one point something million, put at the end of year, the master, I don't feel everywhere, I said, lab, twenty million. That's why I am pushing, now, not suffer the work. So we all here, we have faced a lot of problem. Waiting we ask, we are not asking of money, but what we define, because I believe say, the major problem we mechanic in face, in this state. Now, we hear the roof, the roof where we go talk on our head, that they are major problem. I believe say, if you get access to that in a technical village, ninety percent of our problem will solve. Because at the Kelly village, that is if, I believe say, each of the, if you get the Kelly village, everybody get to go down. I believe say that you go down, and you get down, you go to comfort, you buy a pool down, so people, and they paid to met us. After how many years, not to, not long to you, and I believe say, complete, not go much. I see the last eh, empowerment, way they bring on eh, the, the, the state government too. I was surprised, even the, for the civilized country, others of the, the China children, I believe say, they produce that machine. Machine, I do the lowest machine I get, with my boy not to use, we don't, we, I buy a, it go like seven, eight years ago, now, he better pass waiting, he bring on, recent here. You not the user, and I believe say, they put billions of gold that machine. They is, I think, they said they don't get power eh, the artisans of that street, and all those people, and do they just have money? I beg, with my, my opinion, because I mean, the deepest, deepest is our house, I believe say, if I get, if I get on that mechanic village, I believe say, at least, things going forward, because I know many of them, they don't design, because there's no workshop for them, they don't part in village. Many of them, some don't come from, they don't retire from, because no workshop they give, so now I can't, they don't go buy. I want to go with the mechanic, with the mechanic, with the beer mechanic, I can't of video, I can't, it is like a full arena, of which you not supposed to be so. I believe say, artisans eh, now one of the key for the state, for the culture, up Nata. By the grace of God, I'm being this, being this one, is ninety eight one, and then by the grace of God, I'm sure require, by this opportunity to express myself, and to try call the Natalia, up Nata. And in fact, you are true, like sugar, because, why am I saying this one? I remember I went to Kowa, come this, and we, we gather ourselves for eh, what? Federal government college. I believe many of us get opportunity to talk, and because of the eh, people that surround you, we don't talk. And all the one we, we who talk to, by the grace of God, this is my comrade, the chairman, no money for feet, he want it now. So I want to try, the village I'm here, the dam is now, of Topi Tupai, and I'm about there. In fact, I already see you for picture, for the banner there, but time go for me to see you face to face. Even the transformer we are using for there now, for my small sink hat there, the one that they use before they remove ah, that one where they bring on, when you give us care, and that mean, now who they use for now, when they say worry. Never mean you, now who they use for now, when they say worry here, the only enjoy like, and the only they tell my workshop member, say me and the enjoy like, because of the transformer when you bring there. Say that God go bless you. And I want to tell all the Natal member that, this selection, even if you not pose danger on that person, I be saying it, till I see you one on one, I say. The open again, if you open again, now we will force on, best of what see, I don't hear for radio, and one when you go, two, sir, that God go bless you. Now, if you become governor today, you give us the Keli Village for worry. Now go to one here, the dam, the food, so he go tell us. For worry, who do, who we are, father, all the local government, we want a mechanic village. Because we don't do suffer for this worry. Even the food data, who they suffer, we not care about them, they work. There's somebody ask, the four weeks, so they come back, so go forth, the first one he go give us, we go work. Because when you get the best lesson, you work, when you go sit, I have a, you go go, you know go work one day, you go come and listen, I don't give a shit. And to that, so now we get to the dam, when you prepare what you are shooting. So worry us for you, sir, since you become a governor, from there, I say, you give us a mechanic village. On Nata! On Nata! No Nata! Yes, sir, sir. Eh, my talk go like this, because. One thing I believe, agreement is agreement. Not be saying they will compromise us, end of the day, we don't do their mind finish. Because not me, I did not say before this, the Keli work, because they not eat to me. Salami, Ola, Ola is very soon, you run off. So, this mechanic, I don't suffer away for this mechanic, for this mechanic, I don't stick my hand to better thing. Better one, a form one. So, I, my question go like this, because they will compromise us when for this work. It's like police, policemen, they don't let us erase for this work, policeman, they don't like the Keli. At all, men, I mean, I mean, talk the same thing about talk. Our father here, make you see proof, make you, make you see to it, because we don't see test photo, so we test drive the motor now. But if not see us on road, he go say park, we don't make any dress, he go carry us go station. We go see them, we pay ourselves. We will be, we will be making, we will be making, we will be repairing car, we do, no small mistake, nobody take, nobody are bought mistake. We go pay for the same thing, when we say, we square for the motor, because he go carry, he go carry police for party our results. Now, but they don't use that money for hospital, I mean, if you don't have that money for hospital. Doctor will forget, you know, for our body, we go pay. We go pay. Doctor will kill us, we will see pay, take the child's body, but we will spend on the person's motor, we go pay. If person, if person they see doing, he a doctor. I beg, yes, Nancy, please, we beg you. After day eh, now you business go on. Now you business go on. After yeah, with my PFC, they not tell you to a lot get for yeah, my PFC day, that was as I say, eh, 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 you day, not that. By one grace, you go forth, you go reach eh, but I beg, your promise, maybe not fail us. Not, not fail us, I beg, we beg you, you give us God. So, On Nata! God bless you all. Our colleague, you, you can bless us in Jesus name. We all, we have spoken well. I'm not here to talk a lot, my name is Comrade Ake Benjamin, the Uwe Nata Chairman. Um. My dear Sme, our incoming governor, we apologize for the low turning. I want to assure you, after here, we are going to do our homework, to make sure. That one hundred percent plus one. In Kanta, Nata, in Uwe, Odoo, and Waisa. You are going to get our hundred percent vote. It's strong. No, no going back. This is why I'm telling you this. After doctor, antician, technician is number ten, in abroad, I made mistake. And I want lower, is the person that register this matter. But when they let it. Yes, and who has four, who are, who are, you saw stop three year man, to innovate the human, and then they did a push us away. Before you can produce book, that book that you are seeing there is not produced by one person. Somebody produce the hard one, somebody produce the light one, he said, thank you are you. It's not produced by one person. We have two three category of. Okay, let me ask you, who produce that, is the one that not already you are there, it's strong. I want to assure you, if we, in your first one year, give us a mechanic village in this three or four months, we produce a third year. Yes! On Nata! Uwe, Odoo, and Waisa. Open there, and open. We make mechanic village where we stay together, we share our debt together, we team together, this go work. I would not be happy that mind, that after developing here, it is some truth, they will chase me out. How can we, you cannot listen together, you cannot listen work. Our incoming governor, to respond to the comments, the questions, the questions asked, thank you.
On Gata! No Gata! Thank you very much. This was exactly, listen now, this was exactly, exactly I wanted. An interactive session. I said on that one I come say, I not come with exclusive monopoly of ideas. I get my ideas, true, for me I know say, when I get a lot of input to make. And as I listen to now now, I think all the inputs don't come on, and I thank on that, with the opportunity for us to get this kind interaction. But like I talked before, not be a one time jamboree. God willing, when I become governor, we will stand, from time to time, to share ideas like this. We will sit down, we will ask ourselves, okay, we meet one time, for what is place, defense center, Sidah, Sidah Defense Center. And when we, when we meet for there, he get certain things where we discuss, he get certain request, when on I make, and he get certain promises when me eh, eh, I make on that. Not be so. Then we compare notes, the one thing we do, we go tap each other for back, the one we never do, we go work on that. Before I begin answer these questions, let me, I tell you I want it, of the process. When I listen to that so, I come get to find that say, on that don't meet with your coworker before. See for, for Federal Government College. And see the promises or commitments when he make, he not keep them. Before I begin answer these questions, I want make on that know say. I be man, I dey keep to my words. Even the ones when I not promise, I dey do them. When I go say it so, I promise our people, say when they vote for me, I could be different kind of senator. See, in the past, we don't say senators, we be just love makers, just make love, we go do over set. We don't, we don't expect, on that from government side oh, we don't expect us to do, to do any more thing than that. Then meanwhile, our people who we dey represent, expect us to do the magic, do everything when governor supposed to do. Do everything where president supposed to do, better power, not there. And I why some people go go there, they will say, oh, they won't do training, they go put, vote one billion for, for training, they'll come here, take fifteen million, take do the training. The million won't pay tax and that, they carry the money wrong. If I won't do, I feed one, but I chose not to do so. Say anything, when he reach me, by virtue of my service for government, he can go my people. I don't know why that this is eh, I dey put street life for everywhere say, I dey put performance for everywhere say. They build schools, they build use move, those communities when not get water, they give them water. The ones when get problem with flooding, I been at the river, when want to swallow the land, yes, right there, we put shore protection, put ICT centers everywhere. Nobody, I don't get agreement with anybody saying when I become senator, I go give them all those things oh. I don't get that agreement, only me I choose to do one. Because of my idea, my idea of service, eh that. So when I talk say, I could do this thing, I could run. So I don't make on that get any fear say, I go make promise here, and the promise say we don't go keep up. My name I will be your man again, I not be your coworker. Now, most of the things when it flow through all the questions what I ask, both question and comment, on a pain, or revolve, revolve around this eh, mechanic eh, in the village. And I ask myself, I say, ah, why should that eh, be a problem? Why government alarm are using our money, develop a place, or on our conscience, my come out, and government go dey look. Well, they spend money for definitely, I ask, I'm asking why? Is it so, because why I'm not there, all land there now, not the government, I get all land. Eh, 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 government are not trustee now, eh, alibi the land user, government are trustee on behalf of people, so the government I get all the land. So I don't see why they don't go do this thing, they where they take land, they trade everywhere, they did empower people say, you take this, or this one, he is big man, you think I empower you? They do what they need now, they don't give them. So I want to give on that commitment, I give that commitment, most especially based on the request of eh, Comrade Benjamin. You know, you, you read that the zero in where well, you want be say, now contract on one size so. You say, if we cite, we give you mechanic village, for Uwe, who do worries have appropriate, within one year of my administration. Not be so you ask? Say in return, so that we manufacture a vehicle. So, so, so this, this commitment when he makes so, this promise when he makes so, all of them are get on this side?
Yes!
Okay, so that go to one side now. To me, of your man again, of Delta State Government, when I become governor, I commit, say within that one year, as requested, eh? This mechanic village, you get it. Agreement, agreement to. Who, who talk that one? Salami eh? Salami, oh, are you, Salami, Salami, now what is, you say agreement is agreement, not be so? We hear oh, agreement is eh. I will do my part, you do your own. In addition to that. My brother, from eh, Wundewa. I consulted with him, as you guys were talking. It is not only this eh, three or four local government. We are going to do zona mechanic village. I'm going to put a big one here in central, I'm going to put another big one in south, I'll put another big one in, in north. And what we are going to do, eh, it's not just giving you a place, we are going to do what we call site and services. For those of you who are wanting to stay here, I'm sure you are familiar with this plantation eh, city. The idea behind that say, we go provide the site, now be land, we will provide the services, we put road, we put light, we put water, now be the services where government could use. So this one now, we are going to create the mechanic village in three centers. The one for central, Delta Central, will determine the venue, when I met, I go serve on that, which I'll serve on a leadership. I will agree on where you want me to site them, I will give the land to on that, we go plant the land, we go provide the site, I will provide the services. And we are going to help to do some of the construction, for one of them talk here say, even if they pay back. Eh, it's better of be on our owner. That's a good deal. So we help set up more, and then, it's all free oh. When I will bring government's most, most money, after on that pay and take on for now, so I promise on that, we do like that. For the three central district. Then, um. You also talk about the grants, you know, apart from this one I mentioned now. Grants, you calling grant, but I calling loan, eh, and we could not confuse ourselves, because most time grants are free. But the loan, I tell that before say, I go get an MOU with the banks, because when on that they prosper, Delta City they prosper. But the more money on that make, the more taxes I could do there. And our IGR for the state. Aha, so, I said I will make that arrangement, and get the banks to give on that this loan, loan to purchase your equipment, buy machines, you know, after like that. And then we will be the guarantor, we say yes, I could pay back instrumentally, in case I know, I run into problems, let us a government as guarantor, you know, go bail on that out, eh? So, eh, we do that. And then eh, eh, I think if you are there, on Gata, you talked about issue of eh, security, when they, when they intimidate on that. They intimidate on that say, for not to work with us, that era not finish. You know say, that they only get one month to help now, as from eh, the day on that vote me, as governor on match level, even, even before I take power, say they know say nobody on that anything. I, 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 I didn't behind on that, and I could be talk, anybody were in touch, touch me, anybody were in touch on that, touch me. And they know the consequences of touching on that, or touching me, I be? We will live like that, they look at us say, I watch on that back, eh, nobody could punish on that for supporting us. Eh, even before that, they said, whenever need to wave on match level, the very thing they declare eh, as what you present, don't finish. Eh, on that the worker like this. I see, I see, I see, on that you booga, eh? You know, then eh, eh, Salami also raised an interesting issue, of intimidation by police. Eh, you can't even liken yourself to doctors and lawyers and so on eh. That's your analogies, an interesting one. Eh, what I can promise you is this, I will not allow the police to intimidate you because of the mistakes you have made while carrying out your functions. The big also know say, law see the the books, if you do negligent in, you know, in carrying out your assignment, not make me talk ah, law provide for remedy. You understand? So, it is ideally, when you on that take, aha, she understand, aha, good, good, good. So I will not allow anybody to intimidate you, on account of your, your services, but at the same time, eh, we know there's law negligence eh, thank you. And eh. I think eh, that addressed most of the question, but there's an interesting one here, eh, from, the name is not here, that they say, what are we to expect? of steady power as it affect all technicians and sundry? Somebody asked this question. It's a very, very interesting question, and it's a very, very good question. Remember, Delta State Government set up eh, I P P power for Oga. And we don't, we don't, I don't hear about them before. Okay, that I P P is supposed to give us 1.8 eh, mega watts of power to supply light for everywhere. But you know how government dey be? As soon as eh, Odua come out, and Okoa enter, as he be say, not be start them. He kill them. Because as soon as I most of they do, they forget say, government, they continue. Say, one, one government do, they all reach one place. They all come out, the next person go to continue from, from there. But this one, they will come say, no, not be start them, they will destroy them. They see the hospital, what they do, he body eh, body beautiful Oga. He's supposed to be the best hospital for West Africa, but as soon as eh, eh, Okoa come, he say, not, not be hit them, he kill them. You understand? So now, on this issue of power, with the vex, everybody the vex very well. Okoa kill that power eh, I P P, but they was supposed to supply power to a lot of Ona. Instead now, he come carry, after he kill them, he go set up one for Asaba. For that one, only five mega watts. Five mega watts, more, 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 not be so. But as even as a small rich, it is supply power to government house. It's 24 hours. It's supply power to commissioners eh, quarters. It's supply power to secretariat. Ona when he need the power, Ona not get. Can you imagine that? Can you imagine that? People when need the power, they will give Ona. Where the governor, governor not be servant. Not be servant is supposed to be. You know say, as we do elections, I come me a commit Ona. I say I won't be Ona chief servant, now has to be you. I know one be say, I don't to lord over you, I want to serve you. I want serve Ona. Because everybody, no go be become governor. We all must come, because okay, maybe we give one person the responsibility as a chief servant. Not be say to be. So, not be say that servant, that's what they enjoy pass the master. So now, now when get P V C soon, now I be master. Why we, when the asthma vote, now we be servant? As it's supposed to be. So that power is supposed to come meet Ona. They gonna take, expand Ona business. Not be say you go put the power for government house. Government has a great job. Maybe you go put the power for commissioners, but as they creep, job for there. Or secretary, they create job for secretary. But Ona, I know say, when I expand Ona business, Ona come bring young eh, recruits. I will give the job, I know say, they do apprentices, I pay them too, abi? Eh, so. Eh, you say? Eh, I'm not. You know, so as they come, they work for Ona. You don't create job for definitely that. Only the ones when they work for now, when they go back home, they have enough to take care of their families. So at least you are helping us to grow our economy. And either one they pay money to, you know, also pay some small tax too. Not be so. So the whole thing we just eh, eh, goes smoothly. So, now I need the powers, what we are trying to do right now? You see like this eh, like this eh, mechanic village you're talking about right now? Our plan be say, we want to set up industrial estates across the states. Want to set up one in each senatorial zone. Just like this one now, we will provide the site and eh, the services. And we measure say, the I P P, what we want do, where would you repower so? Power go those places, so that they will feed the operating. There will be light 24 hours a day, so they can do your businesses well. And with that one, companies when they outside the state, when you say, when they come here, come work, or they go come here, they don't say, the cost of doing their business, going this more. Going to reduce, because they get power. These are spending on their money, they buy diesel. Eh, they buy diesel every day. So the same thing, I go do one for Ona. For this mechanic village, we go also ensure say, as we distribute the power by way of services, so we provide, we give Ona the site and services. We also bring power come this place. So now if they get the light too, 24 hours a day to do Ona business. I shall say, whoever ask this question, I shall say, I don't answer, abi?
Yes!
So now, I think I've addressed everything you have raised there. So once again, I want to thank you from the depth of my heart. I thank you for showing up today to interact with me. More importantly, I thank Ona very well, because I don't enrich me. I don't know more thing if I waiting on the do. Now, when I talk to Ona so, than I do before I come here. So I want to thank you for enriching me in the course of this eh, interaction. And I promise Ona say, every commitment when I make here so, God willing, I emerge governor, I go keep up. I'm also happy to you say, maybe I also keep Ona own commitment. Because this project now, not be of your man again project now, now all of us, my everyone, I want make Nata own this project. I want make Gata own this project. So go out, I know say, Ona get my P V C. Yes. I think a Salami, I show you P V C in pocket that time, alright? Yeah, you order there too. Okay, good, yes. You see, that is a very, very good thing. But the people when they have get your P V C for their pocket, and whenever agree, say they go vote for us, go and convince them. Say, Omo Aggege very good, thank you, I can say. Say, Omo Aggege, maybe Nata candidate. Say, Omo Aggege, maybe Gata candidate. Say, Gata and Nata are for A P C five over. So once again, I thank you.
Thank you, sir!
Father, in the name of Jesus, you are the beginning and the end. We started this meeting in your name, and we invited you into this meeting. And no wonder, if a believer wants, says, the Bible says, he that has begun this good work, will finish it. You have started this good work. Lord, with us, as a body, as a party, may your name, eh, Lord, be glorified in our incoming governor to share a lot to us. Father, we ask, even those who are hurt, give them the grace to publish it. Give them the grace to announce it. In the mighty name of Jesus. They have families, they have children, they also have customers. And every day, people keep on dripping to their stores, to their workshops. Lord, as they live here today, may you give them the grace to speak to as many that become their ways. In the mighty name of Jesus. The angels guide them. In the mighty name of Jesus.